...plenty if they paid the twenty percent. I understand that.
See, I was a little confused by the way it was put. Was if you picked up the coverage as well as the prescription, that you're picking up this coverage over here on the line.
Is that right?
I don't know.
I don't recall.
So we probably need to ask them.
Definitely. Yeah, we need to clarify.
Because if that's the case, then you're never gonna... And they're not gonna pay a nickel.
Right.
Because, I mean, unless they're seriously ill on Medicare, paying the first thousand dollars, I mean, just... So I guess the reason we're landing on the Anthem, although we don't have their current prices, is that it appears as though there are eighteen prices... Or there are seventeen prices were a little bit lower. A hundred and sixty dollars for a family. A hundred and forty dollars for two persons. And... Eighty dollars for... or sixty dollars for a single individual. So... Our current plan is gonna have an increase of forty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars with our current employees. And the alternative C, which is the least increase of seventeen-nine seventy, significantly changes the deductible.
Yes, it does.
The copays. How do we handle that? We're... I know we have a... The town pays a certain portion of the deductible. Is that how it works?
The town pays three-tier amounts. For individual will be two fifty for the health reimbursement account. Five hundred for two-person. And seven fifty for family.
And each family member has a thousand-dollar deductible. So it could be up to three thousand, or maximum of three, right? I think for families.
Is that the savings account you're talking about?
Yes, the healthcare reimbursement account that the town contributes to.
Right. And the employee and the family put money in, and if they don't use that, they lose it, correct?
Correct. The town gets it.
Yes. And this year, well, last year, for example, any idea off the top of your head, what was the amount of money that wasn't used that came back to the town?
I'd have to look. There were... we did get some back.
I think it was about twelve hundred, but I don't remember.
I don't think it was that much.
But the town puts money in for each employee.
Yes.
Regardless of whether the employee puts money in or not?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So then the employee can use that as a place to park money pre-tax that they can use for...
Yes.
Eligible expenses.
Medical, eligible medical expenses.
Yeah.
So I guess where I was going, is there an impact on the town's budget if we change the health plan? I mean, is our participation changing? Do we pay any of the...
Well, I mean, that's...
It's not a split or anything like that.
That's the question, I think. Again, the way it was set up, my understanding before I was on the board, is that that money is there to offset some of the expense that the individual uses in the insurance. And ultimately, the cost to the town is lower than if we went out and purchased a...
Traditional.
A traditional pays everything.
Yeah. My understanding is...
So if we were going to a plan that has higher deductibles, higher copays, then if we want to offset that, we have to put more money aside in the town contribution into this health reimbursement.
You would have that option, yeah. You could increase the health reimbursement account. She would help compensate for the increased deductibles and...
And copays, yeah. All right. You mentioned when we were getting started, sixty-three hundred and change in premium holiday. That's for interlocal.
Yes.
So if we stay with interlocal, then that sixty-three hundred offsets our premium. Is that right?
It can. If it's an option, you can either get the check in the mail, or you can have it applied to the premium, to the monthly bills until it's gone.
All right, so that's my question. Is it's not contingent on continuing with them?
I made a phone call yesterday to confirm that. And the person I need to talk to wasn't there. I left a message, and I hope that she gets back to me today so I can answer that question.
Well, because the way it's worded, premium holiday suggests that, oh yeah, if you continue with us, you get that.
Yeah.
So, you know, and that...
It's a sixty-three-hundred-dollar question.
Right.
I think, I don't think they can do it.
I don't know, yeah.
I don't think they can make it contingent on that.
I wouldn't think so because of the nonprofit, right? Who's gonna get it?
And it's historical. It's not proactive, it's retroactive.
One would think so, but yeah, right.
It doesn't seem right, though, if they don't do it unless we stay with them.
We had the first Anthem's option one in the past, didn't we?
We had, back prior to 2013, the town was with Health Trust. And at that time, they had the Anthem products.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Isn't that about the same time that the Attorney General was having issues with insurance companies?
Oh, I don't know.
And if I remember correctly, didn't that particular company or that particular firm, they fought it tooth and nail? Where Primex, Primex went to the Attorney General and said, "We want to do it your way." And actually, they were leaders in the field as far as doing it the Attorney General's way. But I can remember, I happen to know the lawyer who was successful in that case. But if I remember correctly, the other company just, in my opinion, dragged its feet and appealed every issue and...
So I guess the question is, do we wait for Anthem's premium costs to come in? Do we explore the notion of... I mean, even if we go up to or down to Plan C in the Harvard Pilgrim, which increases the participants' cost, we're still after the rebate of sixty-three hundred at eleven thousand six, an increase on an annualized basis. Should there be a discussion about participation? I don't know. Have you done that in the past?
Yes.
Because if you did an eighty-twenty split, you could do the same cost on a plan that they currently have.
First of all, does it make sense to make a decision if in another couple of weeks we will have some information?
In my opinion, we can't decide between, say, a Health Trust alternative that's not priced yet and the current provider.
Right.
I mean, when you look at their 2017 rates, it certainly looks attractive as an alternative. Now, that's just one piece. That's the money that we pay for the insurance. That doesn't take into account the other side of it, which is the benefit that the employee gets, which is different than what they're getting under the Harvard cover. So I think we need to defer any decision until we get...
Get the Anthem.
Get the Anthem.
Yeah, I think we will.
Twenty-eighteen pricing, and you expect that when?
The seventeenth. They're gonna call me on the seventeenth to give you the prices because I told them, you know, we're budgeting it. And I'm quite sure that the selectmen will probably not make a decision until they hit those rates.
Right.
But I wanted to have the selectmen see what is available and get an idea of, you know, where we're at with our current plan at the very least in the ways for next year. So, you know, as you can see, the 2018 rate of the current plan is an indication that selectmen may want to consider, you know, looking at something else.
What... The one piece of information in your spreadsheet that is in here is what our total expense is this year. Otherwise, we're looking at, under the continuation of the existing plan, about forty-two thousand dollars more next year, right? So what is the total that we're paying on this year?
I can look that for you.
I might have it. I might have it someplace.
Well, we could do the math, too. Three times eight, twenty-seven, and so forth, right? Two times.
Is this under financial?
Well, she's going to get it, so...
Oh, under our personal administration.
The numbers aren't working out either. You sure these numbers are?
Okay.
It's down nine thirty-nine.
I've gone over them four or five times. Believe me.
Three equals twenty-eight seventeen times twelve. It goes thirty-three eighty-two.
What did you write?
Well, what she's got down here is the difference, okay? So this four thousand and twenty, that's a hundred and twelve dollars times three times twelve.
Yeah. It's just the difference, exactly.
Right.
How much more we're gonna pay than what we have now.
So what is our total this year?
All right.
It's line four-one-five-five-zero-one-two-ten, right?
Okay, three hundred and five thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Three hundred...
Three hundred and five, six twenty-three.
Six twenty-two.
Six twenty-two. Okay, and that's not, that's the whole year, right?
Correct. Yeah. Yep. That covers fourteen employees.
Now, we budgeted three hundred and fifteen, six twenty-two, but we have two employees that don't get healthcare, right?
Let's see here.
So we're looking at three hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one.
Now, you know what? That's a good point, Lloyd. Because the five-thousand-dollar waiver that we gave for each employee is included in that three hundred and five thousand.
Okay.
So we have...
No, it's added to it.
Correct.
For three fifteen.
No. The three hundred and five thousand, six hundred and twenty-two includes the five-thousand-dollar waiver.
So we paid the five thousand...
There's the ten thousand added to it. So I remember we struggled with it when we changed it.
No, you're right. That, okay, yeah, you're right. You had to answer for me. So you've got to add the ten thousand to the three hundred and five...
But we have to add it to the three forty-seven as well.
Right. But again, those two individuals are not covered by the health plan.
Correct.
Yes, they are covered. She's covered by her husband.
She's... They're not covered directly by the health plan.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so she's covered under her husband's plan, which happens to be the same plan that she'd be under because she's an employee too, but you are correct, yes. Right. So anyway, so that...
So is the ten thousand dollars a recurring expense?
Yes.
So that's not gonna... So we can deal with these real insurance numbers exclusively of that.
Exactly, correct.
So we're looking at a nine percent increase.
Yes.
If we stay right where we are.
Nine percent?
Yep.
It ought to be more than that. Three oh five to...
Versus three forty-seven.
Three what?
Forty-seven.
Yeah. I'm just looking at forty-two on three oh six is better than ten percent.
According to...
Not according to Mr. Calculator.
Oh, well, it's... Well, forty-two is nine percent of the new total, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay. But it's more than ten percent increase over last year.
Yes.
Right? So I can't quickly in my... I mean, it's three oh six. Ten percent increase would be thirty-seven, thirty thousand, six hundred more. Okay, and we're forty-two thousand more.
According to Interlocal Trust's statistics, based in the came here that Tuckton Boroughs, Town of Tuckton Boroughs increased to thirteen point four nine percent.
Okay.
And if you apply the premium holiday, you'd reduce it to eleven point sixty-six. But naturally, thirteen point four nine.
Giving the preliminary statistics.
And we can't be guaranteed that there's gonna be a holiday in 2018. And you can't bank on eighteen grand or whatever it is.
Right.
So I guess we wait for Anthem. Our worst-case scenario or most interesting-case scenario is we got an eleven and a half percent increase in our net cost or thirteen and a half percent if we want to do without the holiday.
That's my question. Thank you.
Which means that in five point seven years, it'll get a little lower.
Yes. Anything else to come before the board?
Did you, while we had our folks here?
Yep.
Did you understand, Bill, from that meeting I had too, that there's a... Is it just the cities that can set up a fund?
Self-planned, self-funded.
For health insurance increases?
I believe that the towns may have that available too, but the mechanism is different between the way a city does it and the way a town does it. So... Because we can set up expendable trust funds and, which I think is what that would be. But whereas in the city, the city council is the one that... They do what town meeting does in terms of providing a budget and all that stuff. They're the ones they do for the city, so...
I guess I'd want to have the question asked of our folks in Concord, whether or not we could put an article together that would take part of our undesignated fund balance and put it into a trust for the health insurance increases. I mean, if we were to try to keep the increases at a rate of, say, five percent, we could calculate out what the amount of money would be on it this year and then figure out how long we wanted to put that out there. It just seems like, you know...
Well...
I mean, thirteen and a half percent isn't outrageous. It's certainly not doubling, but it's still a major amount of budget.
But that's a healthy question, is it?
It is.
No pun intended.
But whether we fund it directly, is it a curse, or we put money aside to fund in the future? It's still tax money that gets...
Right. Well, we've got to do something with our undesignated fund balance surplus.
Yes.
And whether or not we keep it in-house for increases that are coming forward or gonna happen in the future, or whether or not we just put off against expenses this year, hard of the web. It's the same thing. It's actually saving the taxpayer from increases.
Being re-taxed, yes.
Right.
So, I mean, if you wouldn't mind, I'll have a call.
Exactly.
And just give us some options on that.
Yep.
So that we're not struggling with this issue. I mean, we probably want to examine different plans annually, but I don't know that it's gonna get any better for a while. I think we got a few years before the health insurance industry's gonna settle down.
It's been, it's... There are a lot of moving parts, yes.
It's more complicated than I thought. To vote for our fearless leader.
Yeah.
All right, and when did you expect to have the Anthem numbers?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, right. Okay. So we have a budget meeting on the twenty-fourth. Let me think what day it is today. It's the...
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, so... Do you guys want to... Well, are we meeting on the twenty-third?
Little books.
No.
So next Friday, the twentieth?
We could meet on the twentieth, then.
Do you want to just do the insurance?
Do we want to meet? Do we want to have a brief meeting on the twenty-third to just do budgets?
I'd rather not do both of those days if we had to.
Yeah. Yeah. Why don't we get together next Friday to revisit the health piece? And if somebody else has got a budget ready to go, like Fire Police...
That would be the twentieth, correct?
Yeah. Yep.
Is eight-thirty too early for you?
No, no, that's fine. I just had, I was struggling with one piece of framing, and I needed to get it done, or I'd be down here thinking about that.
Karen, are there a couple of budgets that you think are appropriate for Friday?
Diane, you have... Did you get Fire Department yet?
Well, the Fire Department, when I went over their budget yesterday, noticed that they didn't add the two percent grade next step in his employees. All he did was add the COLO. And the other departments...
They've been a hard ass this year.
So I talked to him yesterday, and he said he wasn't aware that the selectmen had decided to add the two, the next step into their, into the employees' budget amounts for next year. So I'm...
So he's not ready yet?
Well, he's waiting for the word. And I told him...
The word came out, makes him...
Well, I thought so. And so I told him that I thought so. I says, "Hey, he never got any..." He never got the word. All I said, "Oh, but he just verified and made sure." So that's what I'm doing.
So that could be ready Monday?
Yep.
Well, we have other budgets that you can look at other than... And you won't go idle. That's for sure.
Do you guys want to do town clerk and code officer Monday?
Right.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, because I can't talk to them.
And we have others that you could do, too.
If we can get the people to come in, that's the... Monday's meetings, we're already at, what, ten, ten something before budget reviews, so...
Yeah.
But it wins.
We'll be out by now. Hopefully, it's a rainy day.
You can do CBA. Jackie can come in for that.
Yep, he'll be here.
Or do you want...
We had a question about CBA legal expenses. Did you look back and look at...
I talked to Jackie about that, and I've never used the CBA or the planning budget in legal lines that I can recall.
So if we have expenses in those areas, then they ought to be charged to those budget lines. Otherwise, why do we have the budget lines in there?
Well, when I first started working here, I was charging, you know, CBA appeals to the CBA line, and I was corrected, told not to do that.
I would assume that, I mean, there's gotta be some legal expenses on Master Plan. There was the last time I did it. And CBA had a court case this year.
Yep.
Yeah.
Although...
Well, in my opinion, and my understanding is, the reason you have a line there is so that you can track expense in that particular area. We do have legal expense for CBA, court expenses. It ought to be on that line.
No, I think that would be a good idea to do it that way. My only suggestion would be we'd have to increase some of those lines because I think CBA is four hundred dollars, and you're not gonna...
Well, it'd be nice to know what that court cost was on that case so that we can have some sort of...
The other thing is, we apparently have been covering it out of the other legal all along.
Yes.
So we ought to have plenty of money budgeted if we continue to budget. But if we start charging it in there, then going forward, we can actually see where that expense is, and we can budget it.
How hard would it be to break out that case that CBA had?
Well, if I do a printout, I've been pretty good about putting in details on each payment that I make, like this term, which is CBA or planning or general town.
Right. Because we can adjust that now. I mean, at least them would know...
Exactly.
What we're doing. And that would give some of the budget numbers who wanted to slash and burn a little more detail on, you know, the selectmen aren't just willy-milly calling lawyers. Although I call lawyers all the time, but I'm married to them.
Do you want me to put library on Monday, too? Or book for the... Do you agree that we need an insurance cut out?
I wish they already did it, and I have the information for a minute. They did it while you were making comments.
It's on your recorder, yeah.
Oh, it was right. Oh, when I came back after, I didn't already. That's why I said you need to move on it.
You said, "Look, Karen's not here, let's make the motion."
No, we were just trying to stay up there.
We're trying to keep you on my toes over here.
Is there anything else?
The other thing that I will lay on the table for thought over the weekend, we have several items that are on the CIP program as carryovers from previous years that we need to address in some way. And includes, there was an amount guesstimated for Union Wharf and some continuing guesstimated expense for work down at Lake Road on the bulkhead. The way it was broken out is, well, a little history on this. A year ago, two years ago, we had a proposal to do all the work at Lake Road for, it's like, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So this is beyond the boat launch?
Yeah.
Yes.
And the additional work beyond the ramp, which we're doing for twenty-five this year, includes rebuilding the bulkhead that runs down long there and some improvements to the drainage that are not completely defined. So the total project, ramp, bulkhead, and drainage improvements was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We determine it, you know, it's sort of a grandiose approach. Last year, we took a chunk, said, "Let's do the ramp for twenty-five." And we had previously, CIP had previously said, "All right, well, makes sense that let's just break this up into chunks." So we have two remaining chunks that are in the spreadsheet from last year of fifty thousand dollars each for the additional work.
Just on Lake Street?
Just on Lake Road, right. And I don't, I don't think there's gonna be that much expense involved in that. We don't have good numbers at this point. But we ought to say, "This is what we think it's gonna be." say, this is what we think it's gonna be, and when, and when we want to have it reflected in the, in the out-year plan. The other thing is, we had, and this has been on the spreadsheet for several years, repair, slant rebuilding at Union Wharf, and the original guesstimate on that was thirteen thousand dollars, so...
This is the launch ramp?
No, this is, this is the Wharf, Union Wharf, right, and the side of the Wharf is... He's, he's doing some work on getting some estimating done for that, but I will have at least a thought on Monday as to where we want to go in terms of the submission, because we're not gonna have in the next two, three weeks, a even fairly close number on that, but we need to have something to move forward, so...
At least a placeholder.
Yeah, exactly, and...
Well, yeah, we need to start prioritizing, what are we gonna direct for two thousand eighteen projects?
Exactly, so, and the third piece is, I know we've had some conversation about adding additional money for road construction, and, so, we need to adjust the CIP piece based on how much we're gonna add.
And this is the warrant article for paving and construction, or the road agent budget?
Well...
Because I'm a little...
Here's, to go back to the history a little bit, okay, used to be, I want to say, fifty thousand dollars a year in road improvement was included in the road agent's budget, but it's a capital expense because it's rebuilding roads. And then, and then the, the warrant article just dealt with paving, and whatever year it was, the budget committee said, "No, no, no, it's all gonna go, we want it all off budget." My recollection is, there were a number of things they pushed off budget because budget expense was going out, and it's like, "How do we look like heroes?" "Well, we'll keep the budget the same, because we'll move all this stuff off the budget." Well, it hits the taxpayer all the same, because
Correct.
we, we vote, we vote the total amount of money. So that fifty thousand dollars got combined with the hundred and eighty-five thousand that we had been doing for paving, so that the, that the article for paving and, paving and road improvement went to two thirty-five. Now, we've had some conversation about separating that back out from the warrant article, and moving the road improvement piece back into the budget. It really doesn't matter where it is. What we're doing is, we're talking about increasing the amount of money for road, road construction and paving, and that, that may be fine.
It does matter in the setting of what happened...